Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 16, 2023 Board of Education Regular Meeting. First, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I had trouble seeing the flag that was right in front of my face. Before we start the meeting tonight, I did want to just take a moment to say that as a Board of Education and as a school district, our hearts and thoughts are with those impacted by the unimaginable violence and loss in the Middle East. We all have personal connections, as well as we've all seen the news coverage and images of these tragic events, and they have a profound impact on each one of us. Many of us are hurting, and at the same time, we want to support one another as a close community. And in Farmington and the Farmington Public Schools, we are a close community. So, given the emotional impact of the current international crisis, we want you to know that we do have helpful resources available for students and for parents and for adults in helping your children to assist you in talking to students about war, conflict, and violence. We do have those resources available. They are available on our website. They are available at the schools. And if you're a child, or if any student that you know, or if any student that you are a guardian for needs support, please be sure to connect with the Guidance Counseling Department for the high school, or IAR, or to talk to the administrator, or a trusted adult at your child's school, or your student's school. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone here was aware of that, and thank you. So moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is recognition. We are going to, this evening, celebrate School Resource Officer Shawn Fritz. So if Officer, do you want Officer Fritz to come up here while we talk about him? Officer Fritz, everyone at the schools knows Officer Fritz, but Superintendent Greeter is going to tell us more about him and why we're honoring, celebrating him this evening. But you're all going to find out why we're celebrating him this evening if you don't know him already. So go ahead, Superintendent Greeter.
I'm really thrilled to have Shawn Fritz here. Shawn was a School Resource Officer for five years and became very much part of the fabric of the Farmington Public Schools, supporting our faculty, staff, administrators, as well as students and families. During his time, he just established such strong relationships. He dedicated, he is dedicated to the safety and well-being of all members of our school district and our community, and we are so fortunate to have a close relationship with the Farmington Police Department, and Shawn is a wonderful example of that strong relationship. He has gone during that time above and beyond for all of us, and we just wanted to take this moment to thank him and to recognize him. He's now moving out of the SRO position. That is what we do in Farmington. A lot of police officers cycle through the SRO position so that they become very close to all members of our school district. And so when they see our students and families outside of school, there's already a relationships that is built. It's a lot about community policing here in Farmington. So I just really wanted to take the moment to thank you and commend you for your dedication. I can't imagine through those five years, whether it was early morning, late at night, it could even be the middle of the night, and Shawn would answer our calls. And, you know, often, we are a 24/7 organization, and when someone is in need, we are very fortunate that we can call upon our police officers, our police chief, Colin Ryan, and they're always there for us. So thank you so much, Shawn.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen.
Wait, wait, whoa, hold on.
I'm not sure if this is something you will wear, but we all have you. So it's Farmington Riverhawks. It's a winter hat which you need tonight. I think it's very chill.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Agenda Item 3B is meeting our 2023-2024 School Resource Officers. And I don't know if you want to-
Sure.
-name them one at a time?
Yeah, we'll have them come up because-
All at the other?
Yes, we'll have them all come up. So we're really thrilled to introduce the East Farms community, but really the entire Farmington community. Our SROs this year, Jeff Murphy, Alicia Cantana, Tony Rigerio, and one officer that everyone really is connected with, which is Nash, our new comfort dog here in Farmington. Corey Vincent is also here. He's our supervisor for our School Resource Officers. And again, we are just so grateful to the Farmington Police Department for their support and dedication to all members of the school district. I can't say enough about how closely we work with our Farmington Police Department. Myself and the chief are on the phone regularly, and our principals really rely on these officers to support our schools, whether it's around looking at our schools from a security standpoint. They're always giving us feedback to make sure that we're really on the cutting edge of security practices. And I do think that one of the most important things they do is connect with our students and build those relationships with our students, that our police officers are helpers here in our community, and just very proud of our longstanding relationship with the Farmington Police Department, and really thrilled that we have these amazing officers working with us each and every day. So thank you so much. And I don't know if you wanted to say, Tony, a few things about Nash? Because I know many of the students here already know Nash, right? He often welcomes you at the beginning of the day. I've seen him here at East Farms, and everyone's just very comfortable with him. But maybe a little background on comfort dogs for a police department?
Well, him in particular was donated by a company, Puppies Behind Bars. They have incarcerated individuals train the dog from when they're eight weeks old up until when they're ready to graduate, which could be up to two years. He was 13 months, so he was ahead of his curve. But super smart. They train them as service dogs, so they know all the commands, like almost 90 commands. And we have to get certified in service dog training every year to keep that certification. But they label them comfort dog, facility dog, just because service dogs are just for people with handicaps. So they labeled it a facility dog. So we use it as our police department facility dog, and obviously, it's a perfect fit in the schools. All the kids love him, and he makes everyone smile every time you see him. So, and he's done a lot to help a lot of the kids that are having a hard day or anything like that. So it's definitely shown an impact already, and it's only been a short period of time.
I think our favorite command is read a book, and he'll just cuddle right next to you, and you can read him a book. It's amazing. Oh, I think he's starting, yes. Okay.
I don't think it's just the kids that he's helping, probably.
It makes my job a lot easier.
And before you leave, please take some of the treats that we have back there home to your families.
Oh, my goodness. He's adorable. Okay.
Oh, we're not taking a short break. We're going to keep going.
I was going to say, wow. All right. Next on the agenda is inviting and receiving public comment. So before public comment, I will have Andrea Sabinski read the policy on public comment. All speakers have three minutes for public comment. Where, oh, the microphone is up there if you have public comment. So Andrea, please.
The following guidelines are to assist those who wish to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. Speakers are allowed up to three minutes to speak. Public comment is an opportunity for the Board of Education to hear from members of the community. Board members will not be answering questions or discussing matters brought up in public comment. As it deems appropriate, the Board may place such matters on the agenda for future meetings for discussion in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Civility is expected. Rude or disruptive conduct is not allowed, for example, personal attacks or shouting. After being warned by the chairperson, a person's persistence in disruptive conduct shall be grounds for summary termination of that person's privilege of address. The superintendent is responsible for personnel matters. No speaker shall use public comment to bring formal charges against any board employee. Any such charges should be directed to the proper authority in accordance with Board Policy 1120.
Thank you. Is anyone here for public comment? I should have asked that first. I usually do, but there were a lot of people. Okay. All right. No one? Going once? You have a lot of, you have a lot of time. Anyone? No? Say anything? No? Okay. Going twice? Three times? No? All right. Hearing none? We'll move on to the next item. Approval of minutes. All right. Approval of the minutes for the September 18, 2023 Regular Meeting. I need a motion to approve the September 18, 2023 Board of Ed Regular Meeting Minutes as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Any comments? Discussion? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Thank you. All right, that moves us to Item Six, Consideration of Superintendent's Report. So we have welcome and comments from East Farms Elementary School Principal. So here we are at East Farms, and I see a lot of students in the audience, so I can't wait to hear what they're going to do.
You guys can all come up too.
And so-
Just stand right here. Come on, you can stand around me. Come around. All right. We are very excited to welcome you all to East Farms, and with us, we have a large, we have a large group from fourth grade, as well as some, part, half of our amazing fourth grade team of teachers. So today, what we are doing is, I wanted, we wanted to share with you some of the work that we've been doing that started last year called Building Thinking Classroom. And this was a book then, resource, that the fourth grade team and some of the teachers started delving into last year, because building a thinking classroom is promoting our high trust, high engagement, and high achievement. And it's changing the way that we're having students think. We're having them be thinkers. And the fourth grade team really delved into the book last year, and then we had the honor to start convocation this year with the author, Peter Liliodal, having time to share with us the importance of his journey, the research that he's done, and why it's so important that we make systemic change to how schools create thinkers. And that's really where we're at. So I have with a large team here to get you thinking and get you learning about what we're doing. If we, can you, you have the clicker.
Ready.
Ready. It's my group, and we can go one more. They're going to introduce themselves. But one quote that I love is that he says that "thinking is a necessary precursor to learning." And if students are not thinking, they are not learning. So across the grades, across the district, teachers are working to think about how they're getting, how we're getting the students to be thinking and truly doing that work. So what we're going to do is I'm going to turn it over to the teachers and the students, and they're going to lead and you to all learn more. And I also want to highlight these three teachers recently at PLX last Tuesday did this led session, and we took many elements of the sessions which they shared with teachers across the grade levels. I was in a conversation with a high school math teacher, a middle school special education teacher doing the work, and people left so invigorated and inspired by their work. So we're happy to share that with you tonight.
My name's Anne Latour, and I teach fourth grade here at East Farms. And we began the year thinking about some of the ways we set up our classrooms before the students even arrived. So we've been trying to defront the classrooms. So the teacher isn't standing at the front teaching all the lessons. We teach some lessons around the standing table, or around the room by the easels and the whiteboards. We also, for different tasks throughout the day, are building different random groupings, and you'll get a chance to try that in a moment. We have, if you click the next picture. We hand out cards with the groups. We have seven groups in our classrooms. It's about three students per class. So for the lesson, they get a card, and then they meet their group at the vertical whiteboard. So they're standing and thinking and doing the tasks. We've also been really looking at our tasks to try to make them more engaging and to have multiple steps, so they can have more, we can guide them towards more challenging questions. If it's something the students are understanding easily, or if they need more support, we can offer them a little bit more support, and they have the groups, their group to share as well. So we're going to have you try out, have the Board of Ed members and the students try out one of these tasks today. So if everybody can just churn, can you guys churn and look at the board? The easel right here. So your job today, I'm going to actually give you the answers. You have to make up the problems. So you can use the digit cards, one through 10. Each one of them will be used once. You have to make at least two addition problems and two subtraction problems. The fifth problem will depend on the answers. So the first set of answers are 13, 1, 13, 9, and 13. We're going to give you a group, and you can figure out how could we place those numbers to make those answers. And if you finish, we have the next step. Members of the audience, we will come around and hand you a paper, so you can try this on your own as well. So students, if you guys go to your spots, and then the card.
I gave out the card.
Gave out the card.
So the way it works is-
Tie your car.
If you have an ace, can you go to the board with a one? If you have a two, go to the board with a two. If you have a three, go to the board with a three. And a four, go to the board with a four.
I can do that.
We're only going to do this for a tiny bit of time. All right. Okay. Oh, I see. Okay. Hold on, let some adults join you.
The only thing I'm thinking about is the subtraction and the nine. You know, like those subtraction, think about the subtraction and the nine.
But that's okay, right? Was it easier to move it around because it was on sticky notes? Oh, a challenge?
This is new answers.
All right, we're going to bring every, normally, this would go on for much longer, but for the sake of tonight, we're going to have everybody go back to their seats.
Thank you very much.
We will do this in class.
I think they should turn it off.
I think collect your very fancy laying card, too.
I liked it. That was nice. Please hold on one moment. We gave ours back already.
Oh, here I have one.
Thank you for those of you who joined in and participated. We hope you had some fun. That's kind of the purpose, is to make thinking really visible and really promote engaged collaboration. As you saw, it requires a lot of resourcefulness, and it also requires a lot of persistence and flexibility, which, as we know, are key attributes of our VOGC. The other aspect that we've seen in record time really is building agency, because students really find ownership over these tasks. They are so enthralled with trying to solve them, but more so, they are working on helping other partners around the classroom. So the beauty of these boards is that they are visible to everyone. Therefore, we not only collaborate with our three people at the individual board, but if you're noticing a person across the room that might need some assistance, or vice versa, if you notice that some group has found a solution, they are now cross-collaborating throughout the entire classroom. So it truly is a beautiful, beautiful vision to see. And now, we're going to hear from the most important voices, the students.
Hi, our names are Lugan.
Reece.
We are going to talk about classroom placing and structure.
I like how there are three or four desks in a desk group, and they are all facing different ways.
So you can be an empowered learner and a disciplined thinker, and be focused in your own space.
We like that there is not a front of the room, so you can, so you and your teacher work together to solve-
A problem.
A problem.
Break it up.
And I'm Carter.
And we're here to tell you about random grouping.
We think random grouping prepares us for when we start moving classes.
And random grouping also helps us meet new people and learn how to work with everybody.
When we work in groups, we can help each other out and get more work done.
We can also learn how to work together and to be an engaged collaborator.
Being in random groups keeps the class organized, so we don't have to wander around picking our groups and not getting any work done.
That's why we think random grouping is great for our learning.
Hi, my name is Finley Briscoe.
And my name is Charlotte Burns.
And we are going to be talking to you about tasks. Some are the same tasks as the workbook, but pushing right above your levels to what pushes you to learn more. If you finish the original task, there's always another task. And after you finish your workbook pages, there is always an activity that includes the same thinking tools, but also different ones. But also different tools from the workbook. That helps you be an empowered learner and a disciplined thinker, because you are flexible from changing from one strategy to another. Thank you for listening to our speech.
Hi, I'm Amalia, and this is Radica.
Today, we will be talking about the vertical boards.
Part of the vision of being a global citizen is being an engaged collaborator.
I can actively listen and seek to understand the ideas of others.
Also, by using the vertical boards, we can take a peek around for help, and it gives you time to socially collaborate with your friends, so you can get their opinions.
Additionally, it gives you a lot of room for your thinking, which you would not be able to do on the rec.
Thank you for listening.
And these students, they got together, and they wrote, and they did such a great job. We are so incredibly proud of your thinking and your willingness to join us tonight and to share in. So congratulations and great job. I'm now going to turn it over to Ms. Fitzpatrick, who's going to talk about how the team and others are working to extend this beyond mathematics.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Ellie Fitzpatrick. I teach fourth grade here at East Farms. And so as you can see, this work lends itself really well to our math curriculum, but even beyond that, even beyond that, students can really dig deeper into their learning in ELA, in a task that you teachers might originally think is something that would be direct, have direct instruction. But this year, we decided, hey, let's use our whiteboards and vertical boards and see how we can get these kids using their critical thinking skills, their collaboration skills. And they came up with so much more than we thought that they would. So we were really surprised and impressed by what they, the skills that they showed us on the board, but also their social skills as well. So if you can go to the next slide, please. It lends itself well to our SEL work, especially the ruler learning that we do, building our charter. Students use these vertical boards or doing work on the mood meter, and we have, we are developing empowered learners through the use of these boards.
So that's just a small slice into the work that's being done. And again, I'm happy to say that this is happening at East Farms, but it's happening in all of the buildings. And you'll see, as you get to go into different schools and see it at the different grades, it's amazing to see how the students are really engaging in that deep thinking. So thank you so much for partaking and enjoying and hopefully learning a lot. that includes the same thinking tools, but also different ones. But also different tools from the workbook. That helps you be an empowered learner and a disciplined thinker, because you are flexible from changing from one strategy to another. Thank you for listening to our speech.
Hi, I'm Amalia and this is Riddika.
Today we will be talking about the vertical boards.
Part of the vision of being a global citizen is being an engaged collaborator.
I can actively listen and seek to understand the ideas of others.
Also, by using the vertical boards, we can take a peek around for help and it gives you time to socially collaborate with your friends, so you can get their opinions.
Additionally, it gives you a lot of room for your thinking, which you would not be able to do on the rec.
Thank you for listening.
And these students, they got together and they wrote and they did such a great job. We are so incredibly proud of your thinking and your willingness to join us tonight and to share in. So congratulations and great job. I'm now gonna turn it over to Ms. Fitzpatrick, who's going to talk about how the team and others are working to extend this beyond mathematics.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Ellie Fitzpatrick. I teach 4th grade here at East Farms. And so as you could see, this work lends itself really well to our math curriculum. But even beyond that, even beyond that, students can really dig deeper into their learning in ELA, in a task that you, teachers might originally think is something that would be direct, have direct instruction. But this year, we decided, hey, let's use our whiteboards and vertical boards and see how we can get these kids using their critical thinking skills, their collaboration skills. And they came up with so much more than we thought that they would. So we were really surprised and impressed by what they, the skills that they showed us on the board, but also their social skills as well. So if you can go to the next slide, please. It lends itself well to our SEL work, especially the ruler learning that we do, building our charter, students use these vertical boards, or doing work on the mood meter. And we have, we are developing empowered learners through the use of these boards.
So that's just a small slice into the work that's being done. And again, I'm happy to say that this is happening at East Farms, but it's happening in all of the buildings. And you'll see, as you get to go into different schools and see it at the different grades, it's amazing to see how the students are really engaging in that deep thinking. So thank you so much for partaking and enjoying and hopefully learning a little bit more about a building thinking classroom.
Thank you. Thank you, Jessica. And so I had, I just wanted to ask some of the, can I ask the students some questions? I know you sat back down, but I wanted to ask the students some questions. Do, so today, like right now, you did a demonstration on math, but I know you use it for other things, like these things, but let's use math as an example. Do any of you, like before you did this kind of activity, were any of you like, did you not like math so much, but now you do it like this and you find it a little better? Kind of, yeah? Yeah, it's more interesting now, yeah? More fun, yeah? Because this kind of seemed like a, like a puzzle. Yeah, like a game and you get to, yeah?
Part of the puzzle, there's always like, like another half of it or something that you still have to figure out.
Yeah, and, right, and you get help and you're, you can do it with a, like this kind, the way we did it here, you had a teammate and you had friends and then it looks like it's collaborative. You get to do it with, you know, other people in your class and you don't have to be like afraid to ask for help, right? So that, that's good. You find that that's helpful?
Yeah.
Yeah? Yeah.
It's like if like you go home and do a puzzle, it's the same thing with math now. You have to figure it out and then once you get this done, it steps up a level and then you have to try this and this way and then that and that way and it keeps going.
Yeah. It's true.
And if you finish that task, you have another task. So let's say you're in a baking show, you're baking a cake and you only have, let's say, seven hours to do it. And, and you have to do a cake and then you also have to do like a bonus cake. Your, since your time, if, if the time ends, you're done.
Right, yeah. Right, hands off, right, hands off. Except that you tell, you tell Superintendent Greeter if it ever takes you seven hours to do your homework. Because then we have some problems. Okay.
But I think we watch the same baking show. And so does Ms. Winn. That's one of our favorite shows.
Yeah, right, right.
You can be a more empowered learner and, yeah, more brain power in a group.
More brains are working together, so there's more brain power in the group. You're not by yourself, you're, you're working off.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, excellent, okay. Is there anything else that you can think of that you like better about this kind of learning than like when you were, I don't know, younger? Yeah, you ran out of space. Interacting is very important, right? Yeah. Yeah, you're kind of like in charge of your own learning, right? Charlotte, yeah? Yeah. Yeah, so does it make you feel, like, does it make you feel great to be in charge of your own learning and be in control of your own learning? Yeah? What, is, is your name Finley? Is that, yeah? Yeah, okay. Does anybody else from the board have any questions for them? Yeah? Thank you, everyone. That was really good and it was brave and it was excellent. And it's, I have to say, I'm gonna speak on behalf of everyone, because I know, because they say it all the time, this is our favorite part of being on the Board of Education. When we get to see all of the students and when we get to see you present these, because you do such a good job and tonight was excellent. You did a great job and we are so happy that we came here and you did a great job. And hearing what you just said is really important for us and we're so happy that we got to hear what you said. So thank you. And there are cupcakes in the back, which I'm sure your parents are thrilled about. Twenty to eight, so.
The baking show theme continues.
Do we, did you? We'll just wait a minute until it's.
And write them down.
Okay, alright, thank you. Now, moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Farmington Public School Foundation check presentation to the Board of Education. Farmington Public School Foundation, obviously very important, near and dear to my heart. I was the liaison for, I don't know, a couple of years. And there, we, the school district, we are indebted to them, to Tony and couldn't do it without them. A lot of people in town don't know how very important they are. And that, the taxes and the budget do not fund everything that the school provides. So thank you to the Farmington Public School Foundation. I don't know, Superintendent Greeter, would you like to say some words as well?
I'm not gonna take away Tony's thunder, but I do want.
You do a much better job than I do.
Well, I'm just thrilled that you're here and I want to thank our board members of the Farmington Public School Foundation. I feel very fortunate that I attend your meetings and I can see how hard all of you work. They have two fundraisers and we want to definitely keep those in mind tonight. We can, I can, you have them, perfect. A trivia B that is so much fun, that we really want our community to be a part of. And then they're bringing back the Eagle Open, which we all have missed for several years. And that will be in the spring. And again, I will have you go over some of these amazing teacher-initiated grants this year. I think for the board members who are here, it must be so thrilling to hear from our students and all the good work that's going on. And then here a community group comes in and shares what they're doing for our students and teachers to really enrich learning experiences K-12 for our students. So we thank the foundation so much and just, some of these grants are so unique and innovative and will really give students opportunities they wouldn't normally have. And that's, you know, what makes our Farmington Public School Foundation so special, so thank you.
You know, I, I think that, you know, you, you pointed out what we do and maybe that the, you know, the district, I don't view it as we're an extension of what the district can't do. I, I listened to the teachers that were just here and how they're, they're learning, what, that, that was so innovative. I mean, I would have killed to be able to do that instead of Milton and I were talking about our multiplication tables. I would probably be a whole lot smarter today if, if we'd had that. And, and it just shows what great teachers we have across the district and the amount of innovation that they bring into the classroom. And we're just an extension of that. I mean, you know, our, our mission doesn't allow for us to do things that, you know, the, the school board's not able to get through the budget, that, we are not allowed to do that. You know, we do grants that the teachers put up that show innovation that they can do in learning. You know, a lot of the different spaces at the schools. You know, this, they, these are examples of what we've, we're able to fund this year. And we always have a goal that we want, we would love to have a grant proposal from every school in the district. And, but we know that it's hard for the teachers, you know, we're gonna start outreach a little sooner this year. But all of these grants, especially the, the all schools in the district grant, is something that will touch each school. You know, over the course, you know, I've, this is the, my sixth year, end of my sixth year, and we've done a lot of really, really great things. And one of the proudest things, the one thing that we were able to help with when COVID hit, is that we were in financial shape to be able to donate the money for the Chromebooks that the kids were gonna have to take home. And that was not a grant that we funded, that was just a donation we were able to make. And that just speaks to the amount of, the caring of our donors in the town. You know, all of our, we usually just have the one fundraiser. We are bringing back the trivia B, the people, the people have spoken, the people miss the trivia B. And we're gonna bring that back in February. And then we are, we have a board meeting next week and after some thought and some consideration, I think the Eagle Open was great for old timers like myself, who loved it. But, you know, it was a PTO thing, so we're thinking about renaming it the Riverhawk Open. I think that would probably. I have not, that has not been presented to the board, but I intend to present it to the board. Surprise, guys.
It has now.
You know, thank you for the opportunity, you know, there are a number of you here that have been our liaisons before and, and some Bill who's not here. And it just means a lot, you know, you're so supportive, you help, you know, I expect all of you to be at the trivia B. Y'all to have a team, and if you like to play golf or not, you know. Who, I can't remember who the last cha, I think it was a, okay, yeah.
Wait, oh, of the trivia B?
Yeah, our, the eighties trivia B.
You have the trophy, right?
It's sitting on my bar. My mother actually asked yesterday why the, what this trophy was.
You gave it back to him?
Yeah.
She should have it.
I am willing to.
I gave it to you.
I didn't, I didn't mean to strike a nerve. You can tell it's a very popular trophy.
I kept it for like two years and then I finally gave it to her.
So, we covered just about everything. I just would like to say that our success is due to the hard work and dedication of our board members, who I have four, four here tonight, so thank you to come join in this. We're lucky to have an influx of new members this year. Our numbers were getting a little bit low and we really stepped up. And some people that are here twisted a lot of arms to get a lot of people to join and we appreciate that. And they're all great new additions. Our, our tenures, we can only do two, three-year terms, so this is the end of my term. I've loved my time being here and I'm sure that whoever steps up to be the new chairperson will do a phenomenal job. And lastly, I'd just like to thank the Board of Education for your hard work and dedication, your unwavering support for the foundation. And a special thanks to our current liaisons Kathy and Beth, and also for Liz, Bill, and Christine, for you all in the past. And when Beth decides that it's time to pass it on to one of the rest of you, we would love to have you as a liaison and just thank you very much.
And we have one more slide, because we do want to recognize that Tony is finishing out and so is Dara, right? And both of you will be finishing up. And I can't say enough about these individuals. There have been, when I first arrived in Farmington, it was a foundation that needed kind of a restart. And just all of the board members over the years have taken it to the next level and, and the next level. And I know, Tony, you've stepped up when we needed you most and I just wanted to thank you and just let you know how much we'll miss you.
Thank you. Yeah, it was nice of Rich to leave me right at the beginning of COVID. That made a cha, that made a challenge, but we overcame and between our fundraiser and teacher recognition gifts is really, that, during the COVID year, we raised $12,000 just by family members doing five, 10, $15 teacher recognition gifts. And we'd send them out a certificate and we were able to fund all our grants that year, just based on that, so.
And this is for both of you from us.
Thank you very much.
Amazing check.
I'll just have to come back. You have last year, so.
Thank you, Tony. And board members. Okay. Agenda item 6C, class size report. Kim?
Yes. So each year, this report is prepared for you in conjunction with the enrollment report to provide you with a detailed and specific look at current classroom course sizes across the district. So on pages seven through 14, you see our elementary school class sizes by school and by grade. And we are within policy of 19.5 to 1 as an average across all K-4 elementary schools. The average across K-6 is 21.15, which is shown on page 12. And pages 12 to 14 give you a more detailed view of class distribution across the district. So on page 13, you can see that we have 14 sections of kindergarten classes with an average of 19.14 students per class. On page 16, we start a look at IAR class size. And here, where you see smaller numbers, it indicates classes that are intentionally designed for more support. The remainder of the, of the report provides an overview of class sizes by discipline at Farmington High School. And I wanted to say a few words about courses that you might have noticed seem to have a lower enrollment. And at times, that lower enrollment is by design for more targeted support, as it is at IAR. But also, we offer a wide variety of classes to our students and we want to respond to their interests and, and round out our electives program. But sometimes that creates real scheduling challenges. Courses meeting at the same time as other significant requirement courses. And so you may see two sections of a course with smaller class sizes in each, but that's our effort to give students what they really want, what they're most interested in. Our ASPIRE program is still relatively new and so we use student feedback to determine which courses will run each year. Some of these courses are running this year as a pilot. Our Capstone and ASPIRE coordinators will be doing a student survey in, in the winter of this year to kind of anticipate where the interest will be for the. this year to kind of anticipate where the interest will be for the following year. And we understand that as we build out this ASPIRE program, we're intending to put maybe some checks and balances sooner in the enrollment process next spring, just to kind of take a look at where are we. Students might express an interest in a particular course, but when it comes time to sign up for that course, they might change their mind. And so, when we run the schedule, it's something we need to do earlier on in the spring to kind of take a look and see, are there some classes that we'll have to say, we just can't run this class because there are too few students in it? At times, we can combine some smaller classes. So, as you, an example of this is in science. You see two ASPIRE classes, Mechatronics and Building a Sustainable Society Together. Those classes meet together at the same time with one teacher. So, at times, we can be efficient that way, and the teacher can be, you know, alternating direct instruction with small group work time and still attend to both of those courses in the same class period. More students than ever are enrolled in college-level classes through ECE or AP before they graduate. And in some cases, the highest level, the most advanced level of some of those courses are really there because we have students, for example, wanting to go to college to major in English. And so, we still have AP English Literature, which if you're applying to a college and you're saying you want to be an English major, that's something they might be looking for on your transcript. But that is, you know, a specialized advanced-level class. It's a very challenging class, too. And so, you know, you see a small number of students in that course, but we wouldn't want to eliminate that course because we have students who really, really count on taking that. Another challenge to the idea of looking for efficiencies in terms of low enrollment and staffing is that although we might be able to combine levels of a class or look for efficiencies, and you might say, well, in world language, it looks like we could save, you know, 0.2 of, you know, a staffing need, that means in reality that we would have to be reducing someone's FTE to a part-time position. And when we do that, you know, we risk losing great teachers. So, it's very challenging across the board to constantly try hard to give students what they're interested in and passionate about and keep those advanced-level courses in place to build out our ASPIRE program and also be efficient with staffing. So, every year, we think we get a little better with this, and we put in new processes to try to do our very best to be fiscally responsible with staffing. And so, you'll see some new measures for this coming school year. The other thing I wanted to mention, and we spoke about this this evening with the Board Curriculum Committee, some of, you may see some of these ASPIRE courses go away, you know, either because of lack of student interest or we need to make room for other requirements. So, in the future, for example, financial literacy has now become a requirement, a graduation requirement, beginning with this year's freshman class. So, we're going to need to figure out how we can offer that course. Each year, more sections in order to be sure that all students are able to fulfill that graduation requirement. We are thinking, Veronica and I are thinking about different ways the course might be offered. For example, many of our students fulfill their civics requirement by taking the course in the summer. And so, we could consider something like that. We also might consider ways to do sort of a hybrid or an online module format. So, you know, we are thinking forward into the future of learning and how some courses that could be delivered in that kind of format might work best for us. But, you know, in general, I think we respond well to student need, and we are responding to the community's need to be conscientious about our budget, our staffing budget. And so, I open it up to any questions.
Patty?
Not so much a question, but a comment. And I know we talked about this earlier. During the budget season, one of the things we talked about was adding a position for another computer science teacher. And of course, when we had to reduce our budget, that position was eliminated. And in looking at this report, there are nine sections of computer science, which is, as far as I can tell, at least in the sciences, the most sections for an elective in the science. And clearly, the interest in that class, in that subject, is growing. So, I think it's important that we keep this in mind moving forward and continue to try to expand our offerings in that regard.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? No? Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
All right. Enrollment report. Scott, Kathy, both?
I'm going to go over some of the numbers. So, last year, we projected that we would have 4,086 students. Our actual number on October 1 was 4,093 students. So, we're up seven students from what we had projected. That's a really great number when you think about, you know, making a projection a year ahead of time and getting so close to the actual number of students who enrolled for this school year. So, we have 4,093 students, but that does not include all of our students. We do have 101 preschool students in our district. We have 18 students going to Goodwin Tech and 49 students going to Magnet Schools. And we're just really thrilled that we were able to get this so close because, as you know, our projection is how we build our budget. And so, that is how Kim does staffing, is she looks at those projections by school and determines how many FTE we will have. And as you all know, in the summer, things don't always, at the school level, play out exactly like we had thought. So, sometimes, we have to add a teacher at a particular school, or we don't have the enrollment in a particular grade level, and we take one teacher away, and we can move that teacher to a place where we need that FTE. You're going to see that East Farms Elementary is over its capacity, and so is West District Elementary School right now. All the other schools are within where they should be as far as their space that they have available. You know also that we have an elementary ad hoc committee. So, although we have a long-range enrollment projection that was done by Peter Prouda and was used when we were looking at square footage for our new high school. We also have the projection we do internally each year with current numbers. We also have SLAM, which is a consultant working with us on the elementary ad hoc. And they, now that they have our October 1 enrollment, they will do a projection as well. So, we can cross-check all these different projections to see where we are when we think about the coming years and decisions that have to be made, both at the ad hoc level as far as recommendations, and then at the board level after that. So, just thinking about that, we, in the report, it speaks of things that the Board of Education should be thinking about. A long-range enrollment projections I just mentioned is Peter Prouda, and we have, I think those go out till 2029. And as we get closer to that date, we'll do another 10-year projection because we don't want to wait until 2029 to do that. Things changed quite a bit during COVID, so we just want to keep track of how things are trending. We also think about elementary capacities and enrollment. So, elementary capacity is the facility's capacity and how many students that each one of our facilities can accommodate. So, those are things that we keep track of. When we add specialized programs, those classrooms come out of the capacity for that school because we can no longer use those classrooms for the, you know, for classrooms, like first-grade classrooms, second-grade classrooms, that type of thing. Our special education needs and general student needs, we're always looking at those things as we're thinking about space and how we use space in our schools. And on the next slide, also thinking about our K-8 facility review, we have many recommendations there that we have been working on through the budget, doing extensive work in our K-8 facilities, given that review that we did many years ago. And as you know, when you see the capital budget and the major projects, those are built on the K-8 facility review, but it's also built on just our custodians' recommendations and things like security. That review did not include security. So, right now, in 2012, we did a security review, and now we're doing another security review that has implications for our facilities as well. We have a new FHS facility opening up in August, and so that is just something that we continue to look at. Will we have increased enrollment because we have a beautiful new building? We've heard that happens in other districts, so we'll be monitoring that. New kindergarten legislation, there has been a change in the cutoff month for kindergarten enrollment. And so, we want to keep an eye on that because that does have an impact for enrollment in preschool, because some students now will spend another year in preschool, and also in our kindergarten enrollment. So, we just want to keep, as you remember, when we went from a half-day kindergarten to a full-day kindergarten, that took up more classrooms. It took up more capacity in our schools, which then has an implication long-term when we start to have increased enrollment. We don't have as many classrooms available because of that. Housing development and trends. This has been something that's really fascinating. We've, you know, see that we have many more housing developments than we've had in the past. So, we're keeping a close eye on that. SLAM is also keeping a close eye on that for our elementary ad hoc, just to also consider those projects that are, you know, in the queue right now for housing developments. We want to make sure in apartments that we are thinking of that when we think about enrollment projections as well. So, there's a lot to consider when putting this report together, and this report has all of those elements. And, you know, just very happy to see that our projections are very, very close each year, so that makes our budget process a lot easier. If the projections were off, we would be facing, you know, some challenges with our budget because we do base our FTE off of this actual report. It's almost the launch of our budget, is this report, because we start to think about staffing for '24, '25. So, any questions?
Anyone have any questions? No? Okay. Nope? All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. No, letter E is Smart or Balanced Assessment Results, State Testing. Veronica?
Good evening, everyone. No, maybe this works better. So, each year, I get to come and present to you the state testing results. And these are assessments that are given every spring in literacy, in math, and in science. And we use these for many purposes, but we use it in conjunction with lots of other data. And, you know, it helps us understand our programming, which students are doing well, which students need more support, and also with this new assessment, also how much growth students are making. In addition, because the students, the state gives us all this data through some demographics, it also helps us understand, you know, which populations are doing, how they're doing on this assessment. And so, I'll have a chance to just talk through some of the most salient, you know, findings from the last year's report. We do give the assessment sometime, usually at the end of April, beginning of May. And now that a lot of the, I used to have to, you know, package up, we had a trailer behind the, behind Town Hall, and I used to have to package everything up. But now that everything is really through the computers and pretty much AI scored, a lot of it is actually AI scored, we get the results very, very quickly. And so, it's nice in some ways because our teachers who have those students in that current year already have a sense how the students did. So, it gives them clues as to, you know, how the, you know, how the instruction, you know, is going that year and which students will need more support. And so, it really helps us with programming for students and understanding our instructional moves. So, and so, you know, I want to just go over some of the results. One of the things that I think is really remarkable, and I point this out in the report, is that our results relative to pre-COVID times are almost identical. So, I went and took the, an average of the three years before COVID and compared it to like this latest year that we're at. And we've already made up for any of the losses that, almost, that we had during the COVID, which I think is just remarkable in two years. That is not the same story that other places are saying this year. So, I just want you to know that that's really incredible, and I just really credit all the hard work of the teachers. As you know, last year, and, you know, I'll talk more specifically about it in a minute, but we implemented a brand-new, like, a brand-new math program, not a new pedagogy or philosophy, but the materials were new. And we really benefited from that program, and our students really benefited from that program. So, one is just that our results are really near pre-COVID levels. The other thing that I want to point out that I think is really remarkable is that one of the ways that the state gives us this information is through looking at students who are high-needs. Now, high-needs is a really interesting category because I was talking to a teacher about it, and she said, well, high-needs are the students who struggle, right? Like, this one struggled, so they're high-needs. And so, I can see how sometimes that's what, you know, what a teacher who's giving a pre-test maybe, and that's what it looks like. But high-needs is very specific. The state says you're in a high-needs category if you're one or more of three different things. And so, one is ELL, one is free reduced lunch, and one is special education. So, any one of those means that you're high-needs. And so, one of the things I just want to say is that in Farmington, that population has actually been growing. And we also have more students at the lower grades that are identified as high-needs. And so, just for some, just to put a number out there so that you sort of get a sense of what I'm talking about, at grades three and four, 32% of our students are considered high-needs. So, they fall into one of those three categories or more, or more, or more. Grade seven and eight, and this is, this is sort of like the weight, this is like the, what you're hearing is like, sort of like this, you know, sort of a difference, but 26%. So, the younger 32, middle school, we're talking about a 26%. And the class of 2023 that just graduated, just in comparison, was 21%, right? So, it just gives you a little bit of context of, you know, at the elementary, we're talking about one out of every three students would be considered high-needs on this assessment. But what's remarkable there is that the high-needs in our, in our district, which is one of the, like, one of the things that we really pride ourselves on, they have a performance index very high, 75%, which is actually 12th in the state. So, I showed you lots of other data about how we compare to the DURG, but this is in the state. And so, in the state, we're talking about over 190 different districts. And so, to be ranked 12th in the state is very high. We're, you know, in the top 7, 8% of all districts in this category of high-needs. Not only that, but the state also gives us some numbers about how students, how much progress they're making relative to their own last year's score. And so, what the state's looking Not only that, but the state also gives us some numbers about how students, how much progress they're making relative to their own last year's score. And so what the state's looking for is a year and a half progress, really. And so they give you, like, if a student scored in this range, we're looking for them to gain this many points. And if you get that, they count as part of your percentage of students who made growth. What's interesting is that at the state level, they peg the number of students, the percentage of students that they think will achieve that level at 40%. So they think 40% of students can reach that ambitious, ambitious goal of 1.5 years' worth of growth in a year. And in Farmington, and this is not with all students, this is with the high needs population that I was just describing, 62% of our students achieve that rigorous role, rigorous goal. And it actually puts us, you know, in the top 10% in the state and actually first in our DURG, you know, that kind of result does. So really, just, you know, really remarkable results by our students. You know, I think that, you know, other things, again, I think that that growth rate is helpful, but again, all of the, you know, the growth rate for just all students is at 52%. That's the one that I said is supposed to be at 40% or average would be 40%. And the percent of the target achieved, which means what percentage of, they were supposed to get this many points, but if they grew, you know, let's say they're supposed to get 100 points, if they get 90 of those points, that's sort of like, they get, you get .9 of, you know, .9 of the score for that student, for example. So our students are achieving that at, like, around 70%, so 69%, which again puts us at the top of the state with this, so seventh in the state. So, you know, really doing well. We've regained a lot of the losses during the COVID times, and I would say that, you know, in terms of where do we go from here, because these are really great results, certainly math, that was only our first year of implementation, you got to see it today, you know, what we're talking about in terms of the way students are thinking about math. And so we're just hoping that that's going to continue to pay dividends for all students, but also this high needs population. I also want to say there's been a real emphasis on concentrating on that high needs population. So, you know, you all understand how the system works, but what it means is that, you know, you know, special lens on all of our students that have that designation that you'll see when we present school development plans, that that's something that we're actively working on, like, who are students who qualify in that category? And what strategies are we using specifically to impact the results for those students? In literacy, you'll hear about this, but of course, new curricular materials to help us with our comprehensive literacy approach that we have, so we're hoping that that's going to make a difference. That's mostly being implemented in grades K through three, but certainly, you know, the good literacy work is, continues to, to impact our students. And then I haven't really said much about science, but we continue to be a leader in the state in science. The scores that we're getting, again, we're, we're at the top of the state in, in, I think, I think this year in, in science, I think we were second. I did do it at one point. I don't know why it's not attached in the, in the report, but I can get that to you because I know I have it. But again, I just think that, you know, a really successful year and just excited to see what this year brings, since, like I said, that was the first year of the math implementation, and, and we continue to look at that same program that we're using for other years, but that would be part of a math vertical team decision and thinking. As you know, we, you know, that was part of the math, we had a math review, so all of the results that we're seeing now is also part of the hard work of, you know, the math committee and that math review to implement some, some things there. So really good, really good results.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Veronica? No, very good. Okay. Next is results and outcomes.
That was.
Oh, that was. No, results and outcomes.
That is results and outcomes.
Next, results and outcomes.
I didn't even know this was.
We're just going to continue the good feeling that Veronica started, talking about, you know, how our students experienced school this past, so this is looking back, highlights from the 22, 2022, 2023 school year. So if we go to the next slide, I thought I'd just really focused on, focus on the results and outcomes from a student perspective. And we often talk about the actions we're taking as adults, but in what ways would our, do our students demonstrate that, you know, all of our efforts are making a difference for them? And so first and foremost, the class of 2023, all demonstrated mastery of the VOGC, which is really a point of pride for us through our Aspire and Capstone programming. I think we have a lot to celebrate there, and watching students, you know, speak about themselves as learners in terms of the skills and dispositions and the vision of the global citizen is very gratifying. We have more students, I think I said this during the class size report, more students than ever enrolled in college-level classes at the high school. In general, when you look at our student survey results from our Panorama survey, our students are reporting a strong sense of belonging and inclusion and relationships with each other and with at least one adult at school. Yes, we have pockets of, you know, work to do and wanting to be sure that every single student reports a favorable response, but in general, our results are very strong. We are now at full-scale implementation of challenge and support blocks, K to 12, and those really serve as opportunities for students to, you know, pursue their interests, to find support, to access help where they need it. And really, I think it's just a remarkable example of what it means to be an empowered learner during those blocks of instructional time. And lastly, I just wanted to highlight that over time and with different groups of adults and teachers and staff members, we are creating co-curricular pathways so that by the time you're in high school and you're interested in engineering, you were able to participate into, in some extracurricular or co-curricular activities, clubs, whatever it might be, to kind of capitalize on and build that interest over time. And I just think that if you listen to students talk about what matters to them in school, they often talk about their music family, their art experiences, athletics, of course, but then so many other ways. Our equity leadership teams now, beginning with very young children. So we're, we're very proud of these things, and I think these are the ways that students would know that, you know, their, their programming is what we care about and, and the focus of our efforts. I won't go through everything on this slide. I share it with you because, again, I think I say it every year, one of the most remarkable things, I think, about the Farmington Public School District is our coherence and the ways in which we talk about the work in a coherent and well-aligned way. And to me, a perfect example of this was last Tuesday, was it Tuesday? We had our PLX event, which you, you probably saw the agenda for that on your Weekend Update. It stands for Professional Learning Exchange, and it's really teacher-to-teacher professional development. And I, I would imagine that really wouldn't work in all school districts because you couldn't have a high school teacher and an elementary teacher and a PE teacher and a world language teacher all in the same room talking about student engagement, or how do you develop high expectations, or how do you use whiteboards to promote thinking? You know, we're, we are all talking about the same kinds of work, a focus on families, a focus on, you know, high expectations, that, that perfect combination of, of warm demander across the district. So these are certainly things to celebrate and things I know you know a lot about because these are the things that, you know, like tonight, our, our students and administrators presented to you over the course of last school year.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? For Kim?
I would just say, just, I think from the awards that we got from the state ranking and nationally, I think also tributes to education the students are getting and how they're feeling, so it's great.
I just had a, well, I wanted to just ask about the, in the, well, in the elementary school, in the climate and culture, like, in a couple of them? Like, in the, well, like, I, it seems like a couple of the elementary school reports, like, the kids' answers about feeling good about themselves seemed a little low? Like, is there, do we know why there? It seems like it was that way last year, though, too. Like, it seems like last year and this year?
Well, it's the kind of data that we dig into. So I couldn't sit here and, and like, answer that question in detail about any particular school, but I can tell you that at every school, when principals and teachers see those results and wonder, gee, what is this telling us? You know, it seems like our families are reporting something different from what our students are saying.
Right.
And, you know, at the elementary age, sometimes it could be just, well, last week, I had a fight with my friend and he wasn't nice to me, or, you know, so it, it can be things like that, but, but we want to take it seriously. So we, we conduct focus groups with different populations of students, small groups together in a room with the principal, or this year, I think our family engagement specialist is going to a couple of different schools to help the principal conduct those focus groups with students, to dig deeper into that data and kind of figure it out.
So is this exactly the question they get?
Yes.
And they all get exactly that question? Because I was just wondering, yeah, okay.
So read the question, because I remember we had, we had questions about the question.
Right, because I want, it's, "I feel good about being myself at school." And then it's like, "I feel like most students treat me with respect and kindness." So I don't know, it's like, "I feel good about being myself at school." I don't know. It's, so I wonder if it's, because the schools that have the most problems have a lot of languages spoken at that school. So I just wonder if it's, I don't know if it's.
Right, if it could be the question, the wording of the question. Surveys are very difficult to make.
Exactly.
You know, reliable. We think they're reliable over time because we give them year after year, and so, you know, if suddenly you saw a big swing, you might think, well, this survey doesn't make sense. But I do think, again, it's, it's about bringing students together and saying, what do you think this question means? And there are times when we, when we do reword the question the following year so that it's clearer.
Right. Because "I feel good about being myself at school" is like a kind of strangely worded question, I think. I don't know, it's weird, I don't know.
I think it does, you know, in our Ruler Social Emotional Learning Curriculum, students would have heard that kind of, you know, identity-affirming language. They'll talk about, who am I, and this is my identity map, and this is me. And we, we teach students how to, you know, over time, really kind of be reflective about themselves and who they are. So it may seem a little odd to us, but I think it does relate to their.
Oh, I know they know what being themselves is, but I mean, I don't know about, "I feel good about being," I don't know. It just, I just wondered if it was the wording of the question, just based on the two schools that it was. I don't know. It was just a question I had. Because then it's fine in West Woods, and then it seems to be fine. I don't know, it just seemed off to me. But, okay. That was my only question about.
You know, the results and outcomes document is, is the board's accountability report. So you receive the school development plans and the program development plans at the beginning of the year. So last year and around November, you received it, and we set goals. And right now, we, as administrators, are doing goal-setting with our faculty. I do goal-setting with the principals. So all those goals align, and then the results and outcomes is the accountability of last year's goals. Did we meet those goals? And so when we look at the survey results, when I'm meeting with principals, we are looking at those survey results, and the school development plans that you will get next month will show focus areas on those survey results, both for families and students. So what, what you're seeing is kind of, okay, those are results from last year, now we have to set some new goals because we can see areas that went way up. Like, we had seen some really nice growth in an area that families had been concerned about, which is knowing their child's progress along the way, and we saw increases in that. So when we do focus on something, we will see the outcomes of it, so.
I noticed that.
Yes, yes. So then, it's the same thing. So now we have the results from the end of last year, and now we're goal-setting. So you will see next month, some of those areas, you're going to see focus areas from different schools, depending on their results.
Right. Okay. I just, yeah, it was something that stuck out to me as.
Yeah, no, it's good to bring it up.
Okay. That was all I had. Thank you. All right. And next we have professional staffing report, appointments, resignations, and retirements.
So you'll see three professional appointments, two at FHS and one at Irvine A. Robbins. No resignations, leaves of absence, or retirements.
All right. Thank you. And H, deeper learning updates?
So you see some recognitions in the deeper learning updates and also some items that are very similar to the presentation you saw tonight by East Farms. So now you have a nice connection with those particular updates from various schools that are, it's very much our learner-centered instructional model that you're going to see lots of highlights over this school year.
Great, thank you. Next is unfinished business. We have a policy update.
So this is a second reading of the purchasing policy that you reviewed at our last meeting, so this would be the second reading of that.
Okay.
Policy.
All right. So it is, I need a motion to approve the 2023 policy update for policy number something, 3226, purchasing.
33.
3326. I'm trying to read it with my one good eye. Purchasing as a second reading.
Motion, second.
All, any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right. This is letter B. All right. This is state construction projects closeout. Is this you? Dr. Hurwitz? He looks, he's ready to go.
Ready. I've been waiting my turn. You in a row here. So, so this, these items here, there are three separate ones. We have three projects for action here. Construction on these projects was completed, some of them, like the East, in particular, the East Farms main office, quite a while ago. However, these projects don't, don't get the certification of completion until all items have been completed. So in this case, it might have been CHRO compliance, lien waivers, or punch list items for completion, and we also wanted to bring them all to you at one time. So we're pleased to report that all three items are now complete and ready for your approval. So the board serves as the building committee for these projects, and it's a state requirement for you to vote them, vote them for completion. So bring them forward tonight for that action.
Okay. All right. So the first one is, I need a motion to accept state project number 052-0079 CV, West District Flooring Abatement as complete. number 052-0079CV, West District Flooring Abatement as complete. Motion, second. Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? All right, that motion carries. I need a motion to accept state project number 052-0078RR, Noah Wallace Partial Roof Replacement as complete.
Motion, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries. I need a motion to accept state project number 052-0075A, East Farms' Office Relocation as complete.
Motion, second.
Any discussion? No? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Unfinished business, C, budget update, budget impact.
All right, just a few updates for the board this evening. First, very pleased to report that Farmington Public Schools was recently notified that we were awarded $96,000 in state funding on a $327,000 grant to improve emergency preparedness and school police intercommunication as part of the 2023 Multimedia Security Competitive Grant. So again, Sam, Matt, myself worked really closely with Chief Ryan, Lieutenant Vincent from the Farmington Police Department, and are really pleased to, to have been awarded this, this project. You'll probably notice in the upcoming budget that we'll be asking for some additional funding through the capital expenditures, so that we can carry out this project, which is really an infrastructural communication improvement across all of our schools, including the new Farmington High School, which will allow us to share communication and frequency with, with the police department on our school-based radio. So a really great enhancement that can allow school officials carrying radios to communicate with the police department in the event of an emergency. The last thing I'll say about that is this grant was specific. To be awarded this grant, you had to, you had to identify a project that increased communication between a police department and a school district. Uniquely for Farmington, we, we were pitched several ideas. Many of the ideas that were pitched were things that are already in place in the district, and so we're really pleased to continue to really, I think, lead, lead in this front. So really good asset. 30% reimbursement approximately for this project. So, so that's some good news. Staying in, in the world of grants, Sam and I recently attended the Department of Administrative Services updated presentation on HVAC grants for school districts. So be prepared for that. You may recall last year, we put an application out for our four elementary schools. We anticipate once again completing that grant to the state of Connecticut for the second round of HVAC funding that was recently made available. And then finally, want to thank the board for, for their work in the negotiations with FASAA. On October 10th, the town council unanimously approved the FASAA contract, so that is set to go into place now, July 1st, 2024. Just as a reminder, the negotiations committee rolls their sleeves up once again in the winter as we begin negotiations with the FPSU. In addition, our bus contract is up for negotiation with its expiration set for June 30, 2024. So we'll have some work to do on both of those fronts as we, as we head into the new year.
Thank you. Any questions for Scott? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business, A, approval of FFNE bid package for Farmington High School Building Project.
So another exciting presentation. So Susan Pinkney is here from TSKP, our architect, and she has been working tirelessly with Kim and others to put together this bid package for furniture fixtures and equipment. For FHS only, this is not for central office. So last time, you saw the technology equipment, that was for both projects. This is just for the Farmington High School project, so that we can get this out and get furniture delivered on time for the project. It's been really exciting to meet over time and just see the different ideas. I, I think Susan would probably agree that we've, we've really tried out many different types of furniture in Farmington with your support and with town council support over time. So we were very prepared when it came to looking at furniture for the high school, because we've tried out lots of different types of furniture, flexible furniture, furniture from different vendors, and we know the quality that we want. And also, in a brand-new building, we also want it to look beautiful and welcoming and warm for our students, faculty, and staff. So I'll turn this over to Susan and Kim, and just thank both of you for your hard work on this.
Thank you, Kathy. Excuse me. I did want to actually thank, in particular, Kim, who has been instrumental in helping to pull this off. She and Russ, along with some other members. Kathy, you have been very helpful as well. I know, Scott, you were involved very early on, as well as Sam Kilpatrick and Matt Ross. Everybody has been so helpful. It's been wonderful to work with you guys. And it's really important that we are working on furnishings that we know the end users are going to be able to use. This isn't what, oh, we think this is going to look nice. This has got to be about how is it going to function for your end users, for your students, for your staff. So that is really the approach that we wanted to take. And as Kathy said, we looked at a lot of furniture. We wanted to make sure that it was durable and easy to maintain. This stuff's got to last you a long time, because we all know, school systems do not change out their furnitures very often. It needs to be effective in facilitating learning, and it's going to be applicable to not just your current curriculum, but it's got to be able to adapt with you over time, so it can adjust as your curriculum changes. So these were all things that we were taking, keeping in, in mind as we were doing this. And as Kathy mentioned again, we went to showrooms. We, Kim put together a wonderful pilot classroom, so that teachers and students could actually experience how furniture could work in the classroom differently from the way that you were using it now. We had samples sent over to the school for people to try out, so that the staff and students could actually see the real thing. So it wasn't just us up here at this level making this decision. We had everybody involved, as much as we could. You also have some of the selected items that are in the furniture package. You already have some of these in practice in the school. You've been trying out for some time now. And in order to be fiscally prudent, we made sure that some of these furnishings did come over to the new high, high school, and they will integrate well with your new furniture. You're not going to be looking at a bunch of beat-up stuff next to all this brand-new furniture. This is all stuff that's been purchased in the last four, five, six years, at the most.
At the most.
So it's, and it's not just furniture. We are also including equipment in this package. So we've got equipment for the shops. We've got custodial equipment. We have, you're, you're going to have a new athletic center that's going to be amazing. It's going to have all-new cardio equipment, all-new machines, new free weights, and everything that goes along with that. So that's also the types of things that you're going to find that are in this furniture package. Now, we had, I put together this and sent it over to you guys last week, so you could kind of review it. And I'm going to cover things from kind of a high level here. I don't want to dig down too much into the weeds, or we will be here forever. But I'm going to show you the things that we have at a higher level. If members of the board want to dig a little more deeply in, there's a section called the item data sheets that are in that bid package, that you can kind of thumb through to see other examples of furnishings that are going to be used in the building. That package also includes what we call the front end. And that's basically, it's going to be the invitation to bid, the bid form that the vendors have to fill out. And then, for all of you insomniacs, some good reading, the, all the contractual documents that they have to abide by. So I also, one other thing, I sent Kat over the SCGO42, so that will need to get signed off, assuming that we get approval on this tonight. And so she's making sure that all of the key people who need to sign off on that document are going to do so. So can we go to the next slide? Okay, so these are your critical dates. As you can see, October 16th, of course, today, we're hoping that we're going to walk away from this with Board of Education approval. Wednesday night, we will be meeting with the building committee to also go over this package with them, and hopefully, we will get their approval as well. And then we meet, really importantly, November 1st, we are going to be meeting with the state DAS, the OSCGNR, to review all of the documents in the package, and assuming that they're okay with everything, and we get our approval letter expediently, we are hoping to go out to bid on November 15th. Bids would be due back on December 6th. This gives the vendors four weeks, and kind of takes into account, there'll be a couple of holidays probably in there that they need to account for. But it gives them time, because when you give the vendors enough time to process the package, you get more vendors involved. You know, people don't want to deal with something if they're too rushed. So we can have more vendors, which increases the competition and gives you a better edge in terms of pricing. The next important date will be, once these bids come back, we'll have the public opening, of course, and then we will take our copies back to the office, and I will be analyzing the whole thing. I will put together a bid tabulation. And what we do with this, I come back to you later on, and we evaluate everything that's submitted. We look at not just the pricing, but if somebody submits something they think might be an, or equal or better product, we are required to review it and determine if we feel that it meets all of the criteria. If it does, if there are items that are in that package, then we will certainly be bringing that to you when we come time to present the bid award recommendations. So on December 18th, we would come to you with the results of that and let you know, here's the overall total, this is how much each category came to, these are the vendors who we recommend will be awarded for these different categories. So on January, one more thing, January 8th, we're hoping we'll be able to get the purchase orders out. That will give us about six months, which is plenty of lead time, so that we won't run into any of the major issues that we've run into before with some of the supply chain. So there shouldn't be any issues with that. Typically, most furniture lead times, maximum, even if they're coming from overseas, will be maybe three months, maybe three and a half months. So six months is more than enough time for us to make sure that we're going to get everything in and have it in the building when it's ready to open. So now we can go to the next slide. Is everybody here familiar with the floor, floor plan of the building already? So I don't need to kind of go through every single floor and bore you with all of that.
No.
So if you want to skip ahead to the slide five, I'm going to start with, this is, these are the classroom pods, and we have, the classrooms are set up so that they are around the perimeter, and in the center, the core of that is going to have some of your basic things, like, you know, your storage and your toilet rooms, and you're going to have some small group and large group instruction rooms in there as well. Depending on the pod, they're distributed differently throughout the building. And there is a, that long area that you see in the middle, that is going to be where the, the teachers are going to be working. So each one of them will be assigned a workstation. They'll each have their own storage cabinet that'll be lockable storage, so they have a place to put their personal items. The rendering that you see at the top was one that was done early on, and so those items that you see in the middle are not going to be in this. What we decided, after having a lot of discussions about it, we decided to have a couple of those, the tables that you see there in the center, there will be a standing height table, and then a sitting height table, so that the teachers can turn around, they can collaborate with one another. If they need to spread out their documents and, or papers or whatever, and go over things, they have that extra work surface. And then in between those two, we'll also have a storage unit that will be able to house some of the extra, you know, copier supplies and any perhaps shared documentation that the teachers want to keep in, within the pod. And there'll be some coat racks as well, so they have a place to put, like, their heavy winter coats and things. So then, each of the pods will also have science rooms, so each level of the building has a different, different discipline in science. And then in between the teacher pods and the classrooms, we have these small breakout areas where we have upholstered furniture. You can see the one that you see in the middle, that little piece that's, that's mobile. It's got casters, and it's got a little handle on it, so you can pull it around, so students can pull it together and work together and collaborate in small groups outside of the classroom. There are also going to be whiteboards and other types of furnishings that are similar. There'll be 12 mobile whiteboards per pod, so they can be used out in the breakout areas, they can be used in the classrooms, in the science labs, wherever you feel the need. Next. Looking, drilling down, kind of, this is the individual classroom furniture. We have an assortment of furnishings, because this is really something that helps to kind of facilitate learning, because you can have all different kinds of scenarios that you can set up in the classroom. The desks, the individual desks are kind of wheelbarrow. They'll have casters on two legs, and then no casters on the other leg, so that you can kind of move them around the classroom easily. But when you set them down, they're not going to be wobbling all over the place, and you don't have to worry about locking them. And they also stack, so they can be stacked up, rolled off into a corner if the teacher wants to open up the floor space and, and give some kind of a lesson. We will have standing height flip-top tables. These will have a whiteboard top, so they can, kids can collaborate, flip it up, and discuss what they talked about in their collaboration. And there's a few other types of furnishings in here that are flexible as well. The triangular tables, those are also standing height, on casters, and they can be used for students to collaborate or whatever. Then for seating, we've got these, the chairs that are in the upper-left corner, that is going to be the main classroom chair. It's incredibly comfortable. It has a little give to it, so that you're not, you know, kids aren't stiff and sore after they get out of chairs, as I recall mine were in high school. They also, you'll also have wobble stools. These are adjustable heights, so they'll work for different students of different heights. And there'll also be a chair that has a similar seat. It'll have the same seat as the main student chair, but it'll have a caster base on it, and that will be a stool height to be used at the flip-top table. Next. Going into the main concourse, this area is going to be, this is, runs right through the heart of the building, so this is a great place where students can kind of gather in between classes. They can study, or, you know, just enjoy a drink or whatever. This is upholstered furniture, but it's upholstered in fabrics that are very easy to keep clean. It's vinyl and that type of thing, so that you don't have to worry about, you know, maintaining it. And it's also elevated up off the floor, so it's easy to clean underneath the furniture. And then we also have tables, high-top tables. Thank you very much. How did you know? We have high-top tables and low tables. And so the students can, can collaborate in smaller groups or larger groups. And also, we are going to have planters, planters, and we also have a few of these mobile green walls. And these things are great. The mobile green walls have an integrated tank in them, so they're self-watering, and they also will have integrated grow lights in them as well. So they're kind of cool. But what's great about this is that it can also become part of a horticultural curriculum that might be implemented sometime. Excuse me. And we also have, like, as I mentioned, we also have some planters. So we can go to the next slide. So the cafeteria, we'll also have a few more of these planters as well. The, in order to bring down the scale of the space, we decided to create these rows of these banquettes, which make little booth seating, as something that's an alternative, alternative option to just sitting at a table. And these are also, once again, these are easy to clean. They're going to be vinyl, so they'll be easy to wipe down. And they also have a gap in the back of the seat, so you don't have stuff accumulating back there. And once again, these are also raised, so that it's easy to clean underneath them. The tables will all be flip-top and on casters. So when it comes time for maintenance to come through, they should be able to flip them up, nest them together, and roll them off to the side in order to make it a little bit easier to clean. Now, you may also be wondering, like, well, why didn't we just kind of go with your ordinary cafeteria furniture? Well, we wanted, we talked a lot about this, and it was really important to make sure that this space feels welcoming to the students. It doesn't feel institutional, and it has a little bit of kind of a college feel to it, rather than feel... a little bit of kind of a college feel to it, rather than feeling kind of like, you know, you're very institutionalized kind of space. The chair that's going to be in the space, by the way, is also a high-density stacker, so these can also be stacked up and rolled away pretty easily as well. Next slide. We have our media center, and I don't think I need to, I don't think I need to tell anybody the media center used to be called the library when I was in school. And this overlooks the cafeteria, because the cafeteria is a double-height space, and this will overlook the cafeteria, but it's a beautiful wide-open space, it's going to have a lot of furniture that is upholstered, it's going to have some privacy furniture, so that students can work alone, they'll have furniture that's grouped, so that students can also work in small groups if they want. And we know that because the library's become so different from what it used to be, it's not just a bunch of printed books and everything else, it's very digitally oriented, the furniture will have, will be able to have electricity in it, so you can charge up your devices, there'll be USB ports, students can charge up their, whether it's their phones or their laptops or whatever. The tables that are in here are also going to be on casters, we'll be able to flip them up, move them out of the way if you need to, or reconfigure them, so you can have a Board of Ed meeting. And there'll be plenty of very comfortable seating for the students here. Let's go to the next, next slide. Coming into the offices, you have a lot of offices, of course, because you've got your main office, you've got your second floor, where you had your career center, and your counseling offices, you're going to have the department head offices, Aspire, Capstone, there's a lot of administration in this school. And so, I just kind of picked sort of what would be kind of a typical office, piece of office furniture, but this will, of course, vary depending on who's using it, it's going to be different from the coaches versus the principal, you know? But it'll all kind of have a similar feel to it. And I've just shown a few pieces that are waiting room pieces that you'll see in the waiting areas outside of the offices. We can go to the next slide. For the music program, there is, of course, we have, you have a vocal, a band room, and a black box theater in here. And, of course, with instruments, that comes with the necessity to have locking storage to keep it secure, because we all know, parents aren't going to be too happy if Johnny's trumpet gets stolen, so we will have, this will all be in the FFNE, this is not a built-in item, it's going to kind of look built-in, but it's part of the furniture package. And these are, you can see, there are a number of them that you can see lined up out here in the hallway, there'll also be instrument storage in between the band and the vocal room, and there's also some additional storage, mostly just for uniforms and things upstairs on the second floor. There'll also be sheet music storage as well, and there's definitely a need for that. So, next slide, just a couple more. For the visual arts, we have, you're going to have a ceramics, you're going to have photography, digital, digital computer work, you're going to have 2D and craft room, and there's also a maker space in this area. So, what you're seeing here is just a tiny sampling, but mostly, the equipment that's going to be going in here would be, the bulk of the equipment would be going into the ceramics room, so you're looking at a pug mill, an extruder, a wedging table, all of these classrooms are going to have a variety of mobile storage, depending on what the needs are for that particular curriculum. And then, as I mentioned too, you do have the maker space in here as well, and that, I believe, is going to be run kind of by the art department, the people in the arts department. Whereas downstairs, there's another space, it's a steam room, similar to that, but that is going to be more technology-based and more about robotics, and, you know, working on bikes and hands-on kind of stuff there. We'll go to the next slide. This is for your technology, these are the engineering and app studio labs, and what we're going to be putting in here, they have quite a lot of stuff to store. And, of course, we only, you know, your storage needs are going to change year to year to year. So, rather than putting in a bunch of built-in cabinets and everything else, they requested all of the slat wall, and this way, they can take the accessories that are used for slat wall, they can move it around, they can reconfigure it as they need to, depending upon what it is that they're storing. And they also will have, because we just, we have the computer tables around the perimeter of the room, but in the middle of the room, they wanted to have project tables that the students could work on, but they also wanted to be able to maximize their storage, so we gave them all of this mobile storage furniture, some of it is locking cabinets, and some of it's open, but this will be great for them to store a lot of their, the items that they're going to need for this particular space. So, let's get to the nitty-gritty of everything, let's go to the next slide. So, for your budget, I think we did really well. What you're seeing here right now is the breakdown into categories, and this just kind of gives you an idea of how the numbers are distributed throughout for all the different items in the school. But what the bottom line is, is that we had a budget of 3.6 million, we managed to get an estimate, 3.428429, and that will leave us with a contingency of 171, 571, which is a nice, like, 5%, 6%, somewhere in that range. Don't ask me to do math, because I didn't have the vertical boards when I was in school. And I apologize that there was an error on the one that went out earlier, but this is, this is the accurate number here. So, this is where we are at this point. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, anything in particular, or whatever.
Does anyone have any questions, comments?
No, there's a lot there.
No, it's a lot.
Exciting to see.
It's very exciting.
There is a lot.
Yeah, I, thank you for all the work, I love the flexibility of it, it's really nice. I would like to go back to high school, except then I would have to end high school. So, that would, I wouldn't like that. But it looks great, I mean, it's really nice, I can't wait to see it.
Like you said, the furniture that we brought into the existing building should integrate very well with all of that.
Right.
That makes sense, yeah.
It does, yeah, I can see it, it'll, it'll look really nice, I can't wait to see it actually in person.
Yeah, oh, it's going to be fantastic.
I actually, yeah, it'll be, it'll be great to see. And I do like the flexibility of it all, it's nice that, because, as we know, things change, and, you know, it's good to use the spaces, that's the whole point of the way that the high school is built, so to be able to use the spaces in different ways.
Right, exactly.
As you heard from the students tonight, just the ability to stand up and work together standing up, or in a soft seat, or whatever, that, that kind of flexibility as well.
Well, right, exactly, because as we know, not, not everyone learns the same way.
Right.
So, unfortunately, when we were growing up, no one cared. They may have known that, but they didn't care. Now, it's, you know, it's good to, it's good. Andrea?
What kind of colors did you pick?
Ah, we, we went, we started off very early, looking at the color palette, and we have selected a range of very muted tones, we've got sort of a plum, a soft green, and a soft blue, there's going to be also a lot of neutral gray throughout the building, and in the media center and the athletic area, you're going to see a lot more of the school color, the red. And so, we made sure that we integrated that in as well, because of course, you know, school pride is pretty important, so that's what our color palette is, and I think, I think you'll be really happy with it. Kim and I had a lot of fun.
There's a lot of work.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you very much. Okay, motion. I had it, because I can't read that, do you want to read, can you read that?
I can.
I had it out, and then I shuffled my papers.
Motion that the Board of Education hereby certifies that these final plans and the project manuals as prepared for bidding and dated October 13th, 2023, and the professional cost estimate completed in accordance with Level 3 of ASTM International Standard E1557, Standard Classification of Building Elements and Related Site Work, Uniformate 2, for the following project. State Project Number 052-0076N, Farmington High School Furniture Fixtures and Equipment, Phase 4 of 4, dated October 13th.
It's Phase 3 of 4. Correction? It's Phase 3 of 4.
That's the motion I was given, so, anyway.
All right, so. For the following projects, State Project Number 052-0076N, Farmington High School Furniture Fixtures and Equipment, Phase 3 of 4, dated October 13th, 2023, have been reviewed and approved for this project on October 16th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? All right, motion carries. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It is now.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's just that the Building Committee does the same motion, so I want to make sure that they have the draft motion, but we had checked it a couple of times to make sure, so, it's fine.
We'll do it again later, if you're very texting, yeah?
No, I'm just letting.
Okay.
Change the motion.
Okay. All right. New business, be review in consideration of the 2022-2023 School District Annual Report.
Yes, so, we produce this annual report for the town each year, and it includes a message from me, and then, an overview of the district, our vision of the global citizen, a year of achievements, many of which we have talked about tonight, whether it's about U.S. News and World Reports and the ranking. Now, this is last year, so we're not talking about this year's ranking, but last year, where we were 10th, and this year, we're fifth in Connecticut. Also, we were recognized as top 10 high schools for the highest percent enrollment increase in Yukon Early College Experience Program, ranking number 5 statewide, and then, there are many other accolades, national recognitions, that students and clubs have received, some state recognitions, really a lot to be proud of last school year. It also includes standardized testing, which we went over this evening, and other data, including equity-focused data that was requested, you know, by the town in this annual report, and our different committees, and other student recognitions, and faculty recognitions as well.
Very, very nice, thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions about the annual report? Kathy? No? Okay. I need a motion to approve the 2022-2023 Annual Report as presented.
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries, thank you. Next is the, I don't know, what's next?
No executives.
Consideration of, next, consideration of Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations Report, the July-August 2023 Financial Statement Report.
All right, so we have July and August, just a couple, couple elements to note here, overall, we're trending in a good direction, we've also reviewed September, just waiting on finalized insurance, which usually comes right around this time, so we'll take a look at September and October, but trending in a good direction, I do think it's worthy to continue to watch our costs closely, especially for our goods and services, as those continue to be a bit higher, and also considering the cuts that we made last year in our budget, I do think that'll be a trend to continue to monitor for the board during the course of the year. Right now, you know, sitting in October and through the month of September, our summer school payments are being completed, you'll notice that there were greater costs than anticipated and budgeted for, so this will be something to be mindful of as we move into our January budget sessions. We're in the process of finalizing salaries on grants, and hoping to realize savings in those areas, so you'll notice that there are some, some areas that will shift between what you saw in July and August, and as we get into our September, and then eventually October, really in the process of moving those salaries over to grants, so that'll, that'll become a bit more stable in the financial report in the coming months. ESER 2 is closed, in the process of that, so as you look at your financial reports, and then, in the months ahead, I expect that the obligations on our ARP/ESER funding will also be ticking down there, as I reported last month, we're looking at mid $300,000 that haven't been obligated for our, for our final COVID grants, which are expected to be complete by next year at this time, so really trending in good shape all around there. Are there any questions on the financials?
No, okay, so I need a motion to approve the July-August 2023 Financial Statement as presented.
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries, thank you. Next is the report of the Board Chair, I don't have much for tonight, just thank you all for everything you do, and just remember that our, our next meeting is November 13th, I believe, at West Woods, so I will see you there. If you can't attend, just let me know ahead of time, you can text me and let me know that you won't be there. And that's really all I have for my report tonight, I don't have anything else, I don't, I don't believe, if I do, remind me before we leave. I don't think I do. Okay. I know that we did our committee reports last time, but there are some, there were some meetings between these meetings, and there are some meetings in October, so I just wanted to go over them again tonight, so if you don't have anything, just, if nothing's happened, just, you can say no report, that's fine, but I know that there were some meetings, so we're going to do them again. So, committee reports, I know that we don't have negotiations.
Scott covered the upcoming stuff before, so we're all set.
Policy, Bill, we did a policy tonight, and Bill isn't here, curriculum.
Just so, we'll have an upcoming policy meeting at the end of October.
End of October, okay, thank you, oh, that's right, it's like October 30th or something, right? Is it? October 30th, maybe?
October 30th, yes.
Like a steel trap, Kathy. I really don't know where I got that from, it's just. Curriculum?
We had a meeting earlier today, we reviewed class size report, deeper learnings, science program review, and early literacy, but I do want to comment that when we were talking about deeper learning, and what that means, and then to have this presentation tonight, it like, everything made sense. It really did, so it was, it was a nice, it was a nice presentation, you know, and I think for Sarah, and Patty, and myself, we all decided that, you know, we, we learned in the remembering, there's a pyramid that they talk about.
We look at Bloom's Taxonomy.
That we all, we are all at the bottom in the orange stage, that's how we learned in school, and the remembering, and these kids are so creative, they're already at the top of the pyramid.
Yeah, it's amazing to watch.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, they're, they're way ahead. It's good, really, because the world needs them. Good, all right, communications?
Nothing to report.
All right, committee liaisons, Craig, nothing, and did you, do you have anything from Craig? No, okay. Extended learning, Sylvie?
Yeah, it was just confirmed that Thursday, November 16th, at 5:00 to 6:00 PM at the Farmington High School Library, it's for Business and Nonprofit Open House, the Farmington High School students were there to support their career, the Career Center and the Farmington High School students for more opportunities with connecting with businesses, and our next meeting is tomorrow morning at, actually, 8:00 AM.
Okay.
Early morning.
Early morning.
All right, we'll get you out of here. Bill's not here, for superintendents, inter-scholastic, that's usually spring, anyway. Farmington Public School Foundation, Tony did that.
Nothing on health and wellness.
What?
Nothing on health and wellness.
Nothing health and wellness. Cafeteria? Cafeteria?
No.
Nothing. Green Efforts?
Green Efforts has been struggling with getting a quorum, so nothing to report, except the next meeting is November 8th, and hopefully enough people can go that will actually have a meeting.
Okay. Racial Equality Task Force?
No update.
Okay. CCEI?
No update.
Building Committee, kind of, we just did that.
We have an end tomorrow.
Okay. No, nothing for Noel Wallace until spring, right? That's a spring thing. And elementary ad hoc, we have, when?
October 25th.
25th? When is it?
Yes, it is.
Is it happening? Yeah, okay. Okay.
It's happening. SLAM will be providing their updated analysis.
Okay. All right. I did remember something for, this isn't really, the, if you have a high school student that is a junior or senior, the high school is actually, your student, it's not for parents, but there is a college fair going on on Wednesday, and you probably, it was in Friday Folders, and you might have gotten it on Parent Square, but it is a big college fair. So if you have a junior or a senior, you, maybe even a sophomore, you could, or a freshman, you could remind your student that they would want to go to this. There are a lot of schools and trades and trade schools, colleges, and I think even employers going to it. It's a lot. There are a lot of people going to be there. So that is something that your student would want to attend. So that's all I have. So we, that's it. Motion to adjourn. We're adjourned. Thank you.